Your business, Lord, and in the end it is your business, Lord. Lord, I just ask you to watch your blessings upon the city of Bogalusa, all employees, and everybody here, Lord, and in the city, Lord, and may be blessed with good health, spirit, and prosperity. Lord, I just ask you to be with each and every one of us tonight to discuss the business of the city of Bogalusa. Lord, believe the eye and protect all of us, Lord. Lord, I just ask these things in your name, precious name, Lord, and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A place for legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have the, uh, the total of the minutes from July 6, 2023. Make a motion that we go. Throw up.
Ms. Evans, aye.
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 Aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Next we have the minutes from, uh, July 18. Okay, I'm sorry, those minutes will be here until the next one. Next time we have hearing, we have one question.
I have a point of order on July 18. There will be a newspaper article in the public space due to, uh, we do not get the one newspaper article approved, but we're getting a newspaper article regardless to the July 18, uh, minutes.
Next is recognition and award, which we don't have in, so we're gonna move on to adoption of resolution, and the first one will be created by Councilor.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the pre-application for the LDEQ subsidy award process of $500,000 for the purpose of a sewer treatment plant rehabilitation. Uh, this affects our sewer treatment plant that is currently, uh, in need of some serious repair effects.
Anyone from the committee wishes to speak on this?
We gotta get a motion in a second. I make a motion.
I say aye.
Now.
Anyone from the committee wishes to speak on this? No public, council discussion?
We are in desperate need, uh, right now of our sewer treatment facility. It needs, it needs major repairs, and it affects our citizens and us, and this whole city.
And I'd also like to add, with the sewer treatment plant being down, it's creating a cost for the city of Bogalusa. We have to pay our workers more overtime, because the emergency pumps cannot lift the sewage, um, as accurately as a permanent pump can. So we're having to send out guys to clean out each treatment, um, lift station. It's really wreaking havoc right now. So this will help us, we talked with, um, the DQ, and they stated that they could potentially, um, forgive up to $350,000, so we wouldn't have to pay back the $400,000 or $500,000.
My comment is, uh, that, uh, the mayor's actually correct in that DQ amount grant has been out there and has deployed, there's no way possible to get that amount. Also, I would like to say, with, uh, HB2 bill, there will be emergency sewer system evaluation and repairs. However, that's a priority two, or the priority two, uh, under that House bill, uh, not certain when we, you know, we see that money. So this would be very good in this particular one.
Go further, Lord.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Uh, next resolution will be created by, uh, introduced by Councilor. A resolution expressing support of the mayor, Mayor Trump's decision to wait on the appointment of the fire chief. Motion. Make a motion.
Second.
Anyone from the committee wishes to speak on this?
I made a grade of one, ten grade of that. It's my understanding that if that's all, our former chief of fire chief retired, and those people have taken the test in order to apply and be eligible to be a fire chief. I just wanted to know, um, a few questions. Um, it says we're waiting on for, to issue a third evaluation of candidates. And then another place it said, the city can involve community stakeholders and other experts. Has any of that been done? I mean, since April?
Ms. Evans, with all due respect, we can't start at April. We can start at June when we receive the test results, but June 10.
Did you start June 10?
We have not.
Why?
Um, so I think I touched on one of the main points earlier. We're dealing with a lot of issues at the city right now. If I have to pick between all of our toilets question or picking a fire chief, I think everybody in this room would like me to do the first option. Um, there are a lot of pressing issues. I'm not saying that this is not pressing, but we need more time. The Civil Service Board has granted us an extension of 15 days. Uh, by show of hands, raise your hand if you would prefer for your city government to come out and do a meeting grid with the fire candidates, so you can ask questions. Raise your hand if you, if you'd like to say this.
I didn't answer a vote on that, if it's granted. But my understanding is you couldn't be working on this all along instead of waiting until now. And we're right, is it tell him, now you have to give him counsel of all and give him a speech, you're gonna make sure that he goes on. I just can't understand why you wanted to put it all. And I'm not there to know why, but that's why I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll say my, my answer for the record.
All right, thank you.
My, my name is Yvette Preston, um, on the 641, uh, St. Augustine Street. My problem is, while we're trying to create reasons as to not, we want somebody that's gonna get job. We're not, we don't want somebody just is gonna fill the quota of meeting that time. So if it takes time to get the right person in that position, then we owe it to this community to give the right person that time for that position. I don't agree with the previous objection. What I don't agree with is putting the city at a standstill until we, who have been elected, to run the city. I, I, I don't give that order. And as far as the request to extend the hiring, as a formal civil service, DS 13, we want the best person qualified, not just anybody gonna feel the time slot. And that's my only point. We need to take time to get it right, because for so long here, we've been doing it wrong. Why not give it that extra time? That's all.
Hello, I'm Sharon Evans, I'm on the 15th, I took that one day. And I have a very sweet little idea, but I had to get up and say what happened, I mean, I'm sorry. We did give the mayor an extension of 15 days. There is a law, some social that states that the mayor needs to appoint a fire chief within 60 days. Okay, and, and the board afforded him an opportunity of 15 more days. And he had since June 10 to appoint a fire chief. And he has not yet.
Ms. Evans, with all due respect, you being at the podium, period is a conflict of interest. I can go into further details, but I, I'd like to spare the embarrassment. Even if it means, even if it, even if it means me having to take it today. My point is this, yes, it's state law, but when I asked you to give me the state law, you gave me a vague bullet point within the manual, the civil service manual. It says it has to be filled within 60 days. The methods of filling, you have seven different methods. The seventh method is temporary appointment. I have already temporarily appointed Chief Lap to be the acting fire chief. Now, there's some qualms within the fire department, and some politics going on about who should be the next chief, and who's gonna be promoted next, which happens to be a family member of yours, which is what I'm getting to, that this is a conflict of interest.
You're wrong for saying that.
I'm not, that's the truth, man, that's the truth.
Being active and latterly is when other, when the acting chief lives. So you're wrong, but whoever's putting that in your mind is wrong. It has nothing to do with my son. He's worked a lot. Nothing, absolutely nothing.
Okay.
But it's honest to God true. Yes, it's the law. I don't, my board supports the law, I know.
Now we understand.
Yeah. Oh, you can understand the legal, because I agree with what's going down right now.
Ms. Evans, what, what statute of the civil service?
It's 332554, and I gave it to him yesterday. But I gave him it initially, if I had all my notes.
Yesterday.
No, no, I gave it to you on June 17. I have a full letter, we can show it.
You said that you gave it to me yesterday.
Another one.
Okay.
I gave it to a letter that said, "The law," to you. It said, "Yeah, it's the honest to God truth, I gave it to him." And I can prove it, in fact, that a, 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 a sidebar, she's here, so. I think, after, this is, this is absurd. I have never heard somebody, and if you say that to me, you're wrong.
Ms. Evans, your time is up.
Oh, I, anyone else from the committee wishes to speak on this?
Faithful, 1931, D. Whitplace. It's time for us to come together and stop rushing to assign people to new positions.
Exactly.
It's time for us to take our time and put the right person in place. Over the past year, we've been rushing, putting people to positions that didn't make any sense of putting them there. Number one was the police chief. I totally went against him, I still go against him. See, he got on city leave now, just start your time, just kill your time. It's time for us to come together and put this stuff together right, and stop all this bragging about king ass stuff. Take, I'm telling you, man, take all the time you need to get the right person. The longer you get the right person, I'm saying that. All this other crap we talking about in here, forget it.
Such quin before you go off, faith, Bogalusa. Anybody else have anything to say? No, they said, "The law is the law."
Which is Brewster, 1982, Dewitt Street. Talked over my building for a while. I just happen to come, uh, ma'am, if the law states something, then you got to go by the law. And you can't go back and talk about Wendy, or nobody, you can't, can't, can't talk about Wendy. You can't go back on that. I used to say it, you said it, you're not. But the law is the law. You don't wanna go to court no more about the law. Whatever the law states, that we should have somebody on their circuit, they, then we should have somebody. I, I agree, we want to have the best, but we, uh, if we don't go by the law, we might just go to shop now.
Mr. Brewster, with all due respect, sir, you come up here every time and you state stuff that's inaccurate and false, and you expect me to just take it. I'm not gonna continue to take it.
Thank you.
Listen, I'm not in violation of any law. The civil service secretary just told you that they granted us 15 additional days. What is the problem here?
What is the problem?
Lack of knowledge.
Yeah, lack of knowledge.
Your lack of knowledge.
You breathe cool. You had two times, did anybody say that?
This is Brewster.
I would recruit, yeah.
That will make a point of order. When someone's at the podium addressing the candidate, no one in the gathering has the ability to help them. So y'all quit asking the person at the podium questions, or coming to them, cause you're out. So that's a point of order, we're gonna find a decision. Madam Brewster, it's up to you, someone needs to be removed, you're not gonna.
Tonight we are removed. Uh, council discussion?
I do have council discussion, uh, I was, when I read, uh, the resolution, I was concerned about the particular law that was in place, um, and if we were, you know, in, in compliance with particular law. I tried calling civil service myself today to see what was going on with the law. And from what I understand, tonight, this evening, um, the law ended June 30th, I mean, June 10th, and the, uh, due August 10th, so, for decision. So, since that time, uh, Mayor Trump has contacted civil service, and they agreed, from what I understand, the 15 additional days. Uh, sir, uh, Mayor Trump, uh, which, which, uh, at liberty to, to let us know which, uh, division in civil service gave that particular extension of 15 days?
So we, we spoke with the state examiner's office, Adrian Gordon-Law, I believe. Uh, he, they stated that it's the local civil service board's decision. They granted, we asked them for 30 more days, they granted 15 more. This, we're operating off of, partially off of advice from members of the council stating that we don't wanna rush this process. I agree, I don't think we should be rushing to a conclusion. I'm not asking, hey, give us 60 more months, but I'm not at liberty right now to just pick a fire chief. But if that, if that's what you all wanna do, then hey, I'll do what you want to do. But what I'm saying is, in the meeting that we had, I'm forgetting what committee meeting it was, you were present, did you all, or did you not agree that we should hold off, we should wait?
Well, yes, that's the agreement, but the thing about it is that it was not approved by anyone in civil service to receive those additional, uh, 15 days. And then my other question is.
It was approved yesterday.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware that it was approved. I know you talked about it with someone else, but I didn't know it was approved. And my other question is, was the, was the, uh, candidates that we have in place, uh, these are our local fire, I presume, and how many candidates applied for the position? How many were local and how many wasn't told that applied for the position?
All were local, but there are many pressing issues at the fire department. We have to put it all out on the table, let's put it out there. This fire rating has been atrocious. We have people calling our office, KK and Miss Lynette, can both, Miss KK and Miss Lynette can both confirm, we've received calls about people concerned about their homeowner insurance going up. They're stating, the insurance company is telling us this because of the city's fire rate. You need a chief who can come in here and get this fire rating down, present a comprehensive plan to the administration for how they plan to do it. This is a civil service position. If this person is not performing up to task, I can't just say, hey, I'm taking you out of the seat, you're terminated. We have to go back through the same order that we just had, that we just all creeped you up. It's not, you're not gonna get that person out of that seat without something very scandalous taking place to pull them out of the seat. This is not a decision that needs to be rushed.
And, and Chief Baggar is currently in position. Correct.
Okay, go further, Lord.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Ms. Evans, aye.
Aye.
Uh, next resolution will be introduced by Councilor.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding or agreement by and between the city of Bogalusa and North Shore Technical Community College Youth Field Program, here and after referred to as Youth Field. Um, to the first placement, it says, "The city recognizes the value of Youth Field program and its positive impact on the community. Due to the lack of federal funding and issues funding cycle, the city will provide financial support to Youth Field. In return for the financial, in return for the financial support, Youth Field students will engage in monthly service projects to benefit the city of communities residents."
Make a motion. Anyone from the committee wishes to speak on this?
So just for context, Youth Field is a program, um, ran by North Shore Technical Community College. Um, they help students get their, their GED, um, their diploma. They pay them while doing it, it's a positive program. It's, it helps turn kids' lives around. Um, if they can't get the funding from the feds, if we have the funding, I think we should help support them in the interim, because they can't go through another funding cycle, which they will be going through soon. This is just to help them get there. We don't wanna lose this program, Bogalusa.
Well, council, council discussion, uh, I need to take a liberty to go through the, uh, the board of ethics, and I just wanted to, I'm sorry. I need to take a liberty to go through the board of ethics laws, and, uh, she, she knows when I pose this question, I just wanna clarify. She's gonna do the job at Youth Field. But just looking at their, their, um, for clarification, especially for public clarification. Okay, uh, one of their guidelines indicates, "No appointed member or any board or committee member of his immediate family or legal entity in which she has substantial economic interest shall be in, on, or absent to, or be in any way interested in any contract, subcontract, or any transition which is under the supervision or jurisdiction of agency or of the appointed member." And like I said, for clarification, um, Councilor, does that apply to me just for open clarification?
For open clarification, I have not, uh, or I should say, I have not, uh, been involved with any of the decisions. The mayor is working directly with the chancellor of New Orleans Community College and had a chief financial officer because of my standing in Youth Field.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, and I can attest that Councilor was not involved in any of this.
Yes, thank you for that.
Ms. Evans, aye.
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 Next on the agenda, introduction of ordinance, uh, the first ordinance will be introduced by Councilor.
All right, this is introduction of, a, a ordinance extending the employment contract Adams and Grease, LLC. A ordinance extending the employment contract of Adams and Grease, LLC of New Orleans, Louisiana, as a special counsel to the city of Bogalusa with respect to the issuance and administration of bonds and other indemnities and coding of elections and other related financial matters, and authorizing the execution of amended and restated, uh, contract employment in connection with the foregoing. Uh, this will be held for vote at our next council meeting. Uh, this is not an introduction only, what they're doing is referring to David Wolfe, which is a financial guru in the bond world. We've had him for over 30 years. Introduction.
Uh, next ordinance will be introduced by Councilor.
An ordinance requested. Ooh, I'm trying to stick with you. Okay. An ordinance requested by Planet and Yoni for the kidney and hypertension associates of Bogalusa to adopt a permanent freestanding on premises to sign illuminated money signed at 1425 Avenue F. And this will be discussed at our next council meeting. The next ordinance, an ordinance requested by Planet and Yoni from Tina Rattler for removal of the sign located at 923 South Columbia Street at Magic City Tire, and to install her submitted sign, a permanent freestanding on premises, two-sided changeable message sign across the street at 904 South Columbia Street. A zone C, which is owned by Ms. Rattler. A zone C, which is owned by Ms. Rattler, and this will also be discussed at our next council meeting. Ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Bogalusa to enter into a lease agreement with District A made into an association and repealing any and all conflicts therein. This will be discussed in the next council meeting. And Council, I did take the liberty to distribute the last ordinance, ordinance number twenty-five five, and also to distribute the license of district A made into an association, the license for, thank you.
Our next ordinance will be introduced by Councilwoman K.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an active service agreement between Act of Chief Incorporated and the City of Bogalusa for the website, and this will be discussed immediately in the next meeting.
Our next ordinance will be introduced by Councilwoman K.
Just for clarification, I was unaware of this before we had to discuss it before we started our agenda, and I won't read the disclaimer. As with all ordinances being introduced on our agendas, the views and opinions expressed by the councilman does not necessarily mean that we read something. We do not put it on, or we're just putting on an agenda at the last minute with our names. So, just to let you know that, if you want to read what the ordinance is, introduce it. This ordinance will be up for vote in the next council meeting, and ordinance setting the cause of rental inspections.
And this will be up for vote at our next meeting. Public hearing and a box of the ordinance, ordinance introduced by Councilwoman K.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between City of Bogalusa and Go Jobs Workforce, Area Twenty. Now, this particular program that we are about coming in, Go Jobs, is a program for transitional work for individuals. I did try to get in touch with them today to get a little more clarification, see if our package did not include. But the purpose of GOBIS, once again, I discussed a little bit at our last council meeting, the purpose of the transitional jobs program in GOBIS LWDA twenty is to provide time limited work experience to eligible adult and dislocated workers that are wage paid and subsidized through employment reimbursement, up to a hundred percent, for those individuals with barriers to employment who are chronically unemployed and/or have inconsistent work histories. It also talks about that it's a limit of twenty hours up to forty hours of work. And I think this is a good program that we, that we will have in place for Bogalusa, and they, they do have in the actual packet about the responsibilities of the, of WDA, from what I understand, it's going to be screening the individuals that may be applying for the position. And also, it has been four years responsibility in here, in which we will interview and select on customers referred by GOBIS. GOBIS will be referring customers. And with that being said, I do make a motion with this ordinance as pending as we are.
Is there anybody in the public discussion space? Nobody is there. Council discussion. Go far away.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Councilwoman Urban?
Aye.
The next ordinance is by Councilwoman K.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between the City of Bogalusa and Siders Development Collection LLC for Bogalusa Community Center Emergency Shelter Planning and Construction. I talked a little bit last time about this, this particular project that maybe comes up. We were awarded under House Bill Two, eleven point five million dollars for the community center and the shelter. Now, it was broken down in priorities. For priority, one, it was five hundred thousand dollars. This five hundred thousand dollars will be utilized for planning and construction. And we also were awarded the ten, ten dollars, I mean, ten million of five hundred, which will be assessed, you know, once we utilize and we get the project underway, it will be assessed, from what it explained to me and talked to the governor's office this afternoon, it'll be assessed where we will get those funds back in and go back through the legislation for, for vote. But from what I understand, these funds, if we do a good job with the first amount of funds, we should be able to proceed. And I would also say, we've been working on this for so very long, I mean, extremely long, and I would like to, to mention Council, Councilwoman Kate, Councilwoman Thomas Case started on this in May. The minutes say it's May sixth twenty-two thousand and three, May sixth two thousand and three, but this was voted in line, and there was a, a grant submitted to the House of Representative David Bitter, was the congressman in place at that time, and it was submitted to the appropriations committee. We're not sure what happened in between the time on it, but I believe Councilwoman Graham was part of that, that council at the time. So, we're getting ready to see it, you know, to come to light, you know, with this administration, with Mayor Tom's administration, so, and the current council that we have here today. And that's all I see, I see. And with that being said, I do make a motion, we pass it as written, unless, Mayor Tom, do you have any questions? I mean, comments?
Yes, ma'am. I do, we do appreciate the background contacts. We told Mr. Case that we want to include him in on the planning committee, because we understand that this work did not happen overnight, so we look forward to that opportunity. Additionally, I also like to again point out and thank our partners with Siders Development Collective, because the reason why we're able to move forward is because they helped us secure the match for the actual construction. So, I think this is a great example of when everybody is working together, we can get things done, so I'm just happy to see this come to a vote.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I was wondering, will this be also used as a hairpin set? Because, you know, there might be some FEMA money out there to match FEMA.
Right, so, I'll be up in DC in September trying to get FEMA to help give us some funds too.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and is this, where's this, like, where's this, will we be able to have the outside of the site location?
So, we're gonna establish, once we, go ahead and start, we're gonna establish a committee composed of government officials, citizens, stakeholders, community stakeholders, to figure out where is the best place to put this.
That's right, thank you.
Go far away.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Councilwoman Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
The next ordinance will be introduced by Councilwoman K.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a contract by between the Division of Administration and the City of Bogalusa for an LWGAP grant, and the grant amount is for forty thousand dollars, and the license is signed.
Sure, uh-huh, I kind of get confused because we've asked LWGAP for so much money, but this is for forty thousand dollars, it's completely forgivable, so we don't have to pay it back, and we can use it for any water projects, so not sewer, but water.
I make a motion, second.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak? On this side? The public, Council? Go far away.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Urban?
Aye.
Aye.
The next ordinance is by Councilwoman K.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Bogalusa to enter into a contract with Go Jobs Energy LLC for renovation in the City Hall. And we had a representative last council meeting come, and he was a little overview of the company in the end, and their plan of operation.
I make a motion?
Second. Is there anyone from the public discussion space? Council?
Somebody from the public.
Just a little quick, now, this, now, the renovation of City Hall, which I think is a great thing, oh, I'm sorry, Tina Rattler, nine oh-four South Columbia Street. I know, being an attorney, when I look around the City Hall, there's so many reasons that a person could sue City Hall, for the problems that they have, I know, with the, with the City Hall. I mean, it's like long overdue, you look at the handicap accessibility to the building, when you look at the fountain guy outside that any child can run a jump to like a pool, you know, when you look at all the stuff, dangers that are, that are around here, I think this is well overdue. I've been tempted so many times, but I think, I think that this is, I think that this is great, and, you know, just to sit down, I think Mayor Tom has an extra job, I haven't been to the City Hall for years, but it's a lot in that City, and I think that's a great thing, you can't do everything, but a little bit of what you're doing now, I think is great.
First Quinn, before Emilio said Bogalusa, Indiana, and he's going to ask people to make sure we don't destroy the historic, we're on national register, the City Hall is on the National Historic Register, I believe. The renovation is great, but let's make sure we keep the history here that we have, like a few buildings we still have in Bogalusa, like the train depot, the cocoa plant, and the moss up, you know. Bogalusa's history is very important to me at GOBIS.
Yes, sir, City Hall is on the National Historic Register, and this firm has extensive experience with dealing with structures of that time.
Council discussion.
The only council discussion that I have is, just as a reminder, this project is also on the HP two, feel the House Bill Two, and the City of Bogalusa received two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and it is prior to one. So, as Mayor Tom had mentioned last week, once we get everything in place, this money is readily available, is payable out of the fund of general occupation bonds.
We're, we're going to be able to still use the corporate right during renovation?
So, I believe they spoke to that last time, if I'm not mistaken, they can't make, so, majority of renovations are just only two bathrooms right here, I don't really see a major issue for why people got access, but again, I'm not in construction, but they stated last time that they're going to do everything possible to minimize interruption.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman K?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Urban?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes our business session for this meeting, now we're moving on to public discussion. First Quinn, before Mr. Quinn, when a person comes to the podium, they have four minutes, please allow them their four minutes, do not interrupt them, thank you.
First Quinn, before Emilio, Bogalusa, Indiana. I'm interested in the good stuff that Bogalusa has, and has had, and keeping it. I think people are aware of the HARP study we have here, the SCOR program, which is a longstanding HARP study in the world, I believe. We have, thanks, some people don't like this, we've got the paper real, it's good paying jobs, and that's a good thing for Bogalusa. We've got our gift, Cassie Park, other parks all over town, and I would hope to be able to extend Cassie Park and the trails and so forth all the way to Columbia Street. If you're on foot or on a bicycle, it's very hard to get from Madison to Columbia Street. I think this would be easy if we could get some help or cooperation from the paper real. If we could get a trail extended, the nation's trail, and I put it myself with a lot of volunteer help, always from one end of the park to the other, the area busy, I want the seniors to be able to go to Columbia Street. And I think, I think that the city owns ten feet of property on each side of the creek anyway. The paper real is only on, on the side I'm talking about, but that property enough, we need to get permission from the paper real, maybe some help, to run that trail across those little ditches that go all the way to Columbia Street, and get some, and it will get through this thing, you know? Remember wild, San Antonio, New Orleans, on a small scale, on a country scale, people fishing there all the time. And, and remember, or notice that August tenth, is a terrible day in Bogalusa's history. We lost our third railroad which went from Mobile to the Midwest, from New Orleans to the Midwest, we were a major place, we had hearings right here in this courtroom, and we were so small compared to the things that went on to ruin our, a lot of people's transportation. Just remember, August tenth nineteen seventy-two was a bad day, amen.
Next one is Black Panther.
Mrs. Black Panther, nineteen fifteen, Rose Pearl Lane, Council and Mayor, I've noticed that on the end of Rose Pearl Pass, my house, there is only one stop sign, and I'm thinking it should be at least three. Coming from Plum Street is just straight through, no stop sign. Coming from Dog Creek, there's no stop sign, and they come out of that line like nobody's supposed to stop, even if the stop sign on Rose Pearl, no one stops, they just be riding through it at all times. And I was wondering if there, there are supposed to be some stop signs there, because it is dangerous. Rose Pearl Pass has a stop sign going this way. From Plum Street, there is no stop sign. From Dog Creek's place, there is no stop sign. From Dog Creek's place, there is no stop sign. And when they come from Plum Street, I stand out sometime, and they just come straight through. I mean, no stopping. I watched a vehicle come through, matter of fact, one of these big trucks, come through off Plum Street, and it looked like it was gonna go straight through the restaurant. That's just how fast they was going. And from my understa-, from what I know, I've been down there thirty-five years, and it has always been, stop signs coming from that restaurant, which it was way back off, and, cause it was a street going through there, where people lived back there. And the stop signs are gone. And from, like I say, from Plum Street, no stop sign, it's only one. And they, they ignored that one as well. So I was just wondering if something could be done, because once they pass my house, which they already damaged that part, but once they pass my house, it's just a straight shot, and they never stop. And that house that's sitting there, they look like they wanna go through that house, but they have to hurry up and turn in a hurry. But it's dangerous right there in that, in that section. It is really dangerous right in that section. And we have children out there playing and walking down the street. And you never know which one of them gonna get hit by one of the trucks, cause sometimes the trucks don't stop and let those children move down the street. And also, I noticed that, I think it's Second, Second Street, when you turn like where the, the trucks come, the wood trucks, there's a hole that is about this deep, about this wide. Just as soon as you turn on that, on Second Street, and then you get up toward Martin Luther King, there's another hole halfway up there, and it's been there, it is dangerous. I know the big trucks has done a lot of damage, but, I mean, the hole is about this deep and about this wide. Right there, as just as you turn off Southern Drive, and if somebody hit it, they, on a small car, they might have flipped. But if, if, or even one of those big trucks, they coming around here, you don't, not knowing that it's there, they would flip those logs all over the place. It is, uh, hell hasn't, a hasn't, not a no hasn't, but a hasn't, in that area on Second Street. And it's been like that. I thought when they closed it off, uh, maybe on the side of Soho, I thought that's what they were fixing, but I see that they were not fixing that. I don't know what they were doing, but it's a hole about this deep and about that wide. Just as you turn off Southern Drive, and then further up, it's another hole, like right at the edge of the street. And if you don't know it's there, and, and at night, you'll hit it, you'll hit it, and damage your car. So I'm just throwing it out there, yeah.
Ms. Glass, I have a question for you. Those stop signs in the area, do you recall any stop signs being there, Creek, Katrina?
Yes, ma'am, they were.
So we just need to replace that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. And then I'll be writing a work order for second. There has, I don't know, the pavement doesn't hold up on that street because of the big trucks.
Yeah.
And I've been in contact with IP on it, you know, trying to put a, whether the individuals, the neighborhood could maybe get the license plate, they recommended get the license plate. You know, but I will, I will be looking into that again.
Okay.
I know it's just, it's because of the trucks.
Yeah.
And we even try to have them routed, like going up One Street, going up Second Street, and coming back down Third Street, you know, to alleviate some of the traffic there. But we'll go back, we'll go back to the board. Thank you so much for that.
They got some damage, those big wood trucks, they got some damage.
So we'll have them out for a single warning and fill it in with limestone. That'll be a temporary measure. But I think we, as a city, have to have a, a huge discussion about the paper mill and our approach to the paper mill. Everybody is scared to talk about taxes with the paper mill, oh, they're gonna up and leave. That's one of, it's, it's in the top ten largest facilities in the United States.
Right.
So they're not just gonna up and leave. We have to start holding people accountable for this. Everybody, the big buzz word the past few months is accountable. Let's hold this person accountable. Let's start holding these corporations accountable. We've approached somebody, gathered and set taxes and actually paid for it to help. I assure you, we have met with International Paper at least twice, and we've suggested different community projects. They're not trying. Their response has been, we pay taxes. So, we as a city have to come back to the drawing board, because another major issue that we don't talk about with these log trucks is the debris. If everybody talks about the flooding, the streets flooded, oh, look in front of the stadium, it's flooded. They're flooded because the log trucks are dropping debris, it's getting into the drain. They're not making them accountable. What are we gonna do about continually impeding on public health? So, I agree with you. We're gonna have to have a bigger discussion as a city on how we plan to approach these issues, because that's just one part of a larger issue that you're bringing to light. Um, the administration is also planning to approach your neighborhood soon to ask for a community interest meeting regarding what the concerns are. So DeWitt, Rose Pearl, Dolly, that whole neighborhood, because we have concerns at the city level too about some of the businesses in that area. And I understand that they're out of city limits, and that's been the hang-up. Let's talk about what we gotta do to get them in the city limits, so that we can hold them accountable. I think we have to start having hard conversations unless we're gonna be stuck in the same position ten years from now with a different mayor. So, I hear you, I see you, and we're gonna work on it with you.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, Ms. O'Leary Brown?
Hi, Ms. O'Leary Brown.
Ms. Faith there? Uh, Ms. Faith, I'd be explaining before you, if there, um, the public always complaining about the four minutes that a person have, and they, or they're wrong with that four minutes. Ms. Langton had her four minutes, she used her four minutes. She was standing there for a councilwoman case and the mayor to respond. So she did not have any more than her four minutes.
Yeah, no problem with it. Faith from nineteen thirty-one, DeWitt Place. I'd like to, uh, ask the city and the mayor to take a look at, uh, that was brought from Mac Street to Plum Street. It needs cleaning up. You got some neighborhoods down there, people houses down there need cleaned up. You got the junkyard man, all kind of stuff in the yard. It's a disgrace to have that stuff in the, in the neighborhood like we have. So, I don't like it. I really don't. I don't see how anybody should produce a good life. And another thing on, uh, DeWitt, from, uh, Southern Drive on DeWitt to Mac Street, those probably on both sides of the street need to be cleaned up. We got one man on the corner of Southern Drive on DeWitt. I'm gonna call his name, cause I'm not afraid. Little Frank. He needs to clean this house up. He got grew to another house, if you're not gonna clean it up, get rid of it. Cause it's a disgrace to come on DeWitt and see this first house when you turn in. I don't like it. So I'm asking the city to do something about it. And, uh, please get Plum Street fixed, and, and down on the, in eighteen hundred block of DeWitt, please get that fixed. It needs to be repaired quickly. This, and this place with the name called out a few minutes ago, up on Second Street, I just came down Second Street a few months ago. You would tear that car up if you don't be careful. And it needs to be fixed. And over there by the high school football stadium, it's ridiculous for the mill to have trucks coming in and out by the ditch and burning, and all that dust. That dirt goo with there, just got the ditches all full of dirt. It's a disgrace. We need to go to the mill and get the mill to fix that street. They have, they use the ditch, come and get their little ditch, make it fix that from, uh, from the, from the mill. I want you to, to, uh, to lay a treat there. It's a disgrace, all that dust going out in the ditches, the little ditches over there. So let's get some private announcement, please, and work together. And could be on that committee if I can get this place cleaned up. I have no problem going up and looking, nobody pays. So, if y'all need to hear this, this walk or somebody crazy, call on me.
That concludes our public participation. We're moving on to that other street report.
Um, so, not really many remarks tonight. We wrapped up all of our youth services for the summer, so mayor's camp went off without a hitch. Um, the jobs program is wrapped up. We're currently working with Bogalusa City Schools to figure out what we can partner on for Fridays, because I know that's a huge concern for many parents. So whatever the city can do to step in and help the kids be productive on Fridays, that's what we're gonna do. That's about it for right now. I thank you all for coming out. God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor on the case?
Thank you, uh, yeah, President. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you for your continued prayers. I'll wait till everyone goes out. I could be patient. Lost the conversation. Okay, thank you everyone for coming out. Thank you for your continued prayers. I think we had a very productive, uh, meeting, um, this evening. Um, Mr. Fords, you know, as you know, I gave you some of your proposed ideas, and I'll begin with you, uh, on your ideas of building nature trails as well. We spent a little time, councilman, last time, he had some pretty good ideas. Um, as I said, uh, Ms. She, she was acting, acting, or, okay, I'm sorry. I want to, I want to thank you for bringing it to my attention once again for a second. That's, that's been a problem. Uh, as the mayor said, we have to come up with a game plan. About, I even reached to Memphis, where their corporate office, to let them know that, you know, we need streets, uh, because they are a very lucrative company, you know? So, it's been happening for years, and we have elderly there on that street. They're shaking the foundation of their homes, so, yeah, we definitely need assistance with that. Um, also, uh, Mr. Faith, thank you for your interest. We need as many people as we can, uh, that will fight litter, fight light, uh, within I C. So that is needed. I think that's, that's all that I have. Oh, and my husband, uh, he will know that, uh, I know Mary mentioned him possibly on a committee, but he knows me, my husband knows me. So, so I will be checking to see if, if that's a conflict. It's probably not a conflict, but he knows I am. So, thank you everybody.
Thank you, uh, Counselor McKay. Ms. Leonard?
I want, I want to thank y'all for coming out tonight. I appreciate everybody showing up. I want to thank the administration and, uh, everybody that showed up today, uh, to my surprise. Uh, the administration has been tearing down the old, uh, Breland's Red and White Grocery Store. It was heavily damaged during Katrina and Adam, and the roof that fell in, and it was a high sword. It's in a high traffic location. I want to thank the administration for part of that. I'm much appreciated. If someone's fighting in the lottery every time something's done in my district, no, no offense to this, this administration, that's for the last thirty years, been that fight. So, but I'm, I'm grateful, and I am appreciative of getting that done, because all of that Harvard rats and everything else, and cleaning up and that is very good. I appreciate it. Also, I did on my own report nineteen street lights to energy. My God, it is a literally nightmare to report anything to that company. We didn't even sit, have a sit-down, hard, hard talk. Uh, it took me, just to use their app, it, it took me almost half, hour and a half to report those nineteen street lights using their app. And I, and I have high-speed internet. I mean, the other websites are working fine, but there's, I don't know. But I'm gonna give it a week or two to see if they actually come and fix them. Uh, most of them were wrapped with a section of two of them, but I did look through the entire neighborhood, or entire district, uh, just about it, uh, like Union, uh, there were five street lights out over there. But I want to let you know that I did wrap them. That's above and beyond my councilman duties. But I did, I do care about the district, and I always done that without anybody asking. When somebody made a big point about one street light out, so I went to check on it. I can't do nothing about property lights, this point back I'm dealing with. Those are the citizens who pay for those. I'm only gonna take care of the street lights that's hanging out in the hall, okay? That has nothing to do with the mayor or anything. I want to keep our street lights bright, so when they put these special cameras out, so they can catch things. And also, if it's sitting on a street corner, you walk up to a dark corner, it could cause a car accident. So, and also, uh, I'm gonna return, I've already turned in some work orders for some potholes. They're on the city website, and one other thing, the four hundred block, I do need, cause it's a repeat over and over and over again, it's been for the last couple of years. The four hundred block of, uh, Hasway is getting a big time issue with, uh, there's a big pothole in the middle of that street, and it's on a busy street, so I'll be turning in our local grants for it. Uh, but I did turn in work orders like the Hudson and all that. And we did, we're looking at some street paving. I'm sure the mayor is working on that. And, you know, I don't think he forgot about any of the other five councilman's districts. So, just keep, keep calling us. We do write our work orders. If they cannot, they call me for assistance. We don't want to overload the people in the public works and stuff like that. But we have the patience of Joe here, so that's what I ask you all to do likewise. Thank you. And have a great night, and God bless each one of you.
Thank you, Counselor Leonard. Uh, Counselor McKay?
Yes, uh, thank you, President. I just want to mention also, was the eighth annual back-to-school giveaway, District A, eighth annual back-to-school supply giveaway. Uh, kids and the parents came out, it was held at the, uh, Apollo Sports Recreation Center. Director Brown was kind of letting use of me. And I also want to commend, uh, Ms. Nion Barnes on the back-to-school giveaway from, uh, in Cassidy Park. She was in partnership, or the city was in partnership with her. Uh, that's, she has a special needs program, and is conducted every year as well. But I just want to say congratulations there and commemorate everyone that was involved in those two activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. Uh, Counselor Wallace?
Just want to say thank you for actually getting pitched out. This is my first meeting back, and I've been out in the last two meetings, I had a sub notification, I'm getting there. Please continue, keep me in your prayers. I'm not a hundred percent, but I'm getting there. Um, just, I mean, I want to tell you how you're doing. Um, Ms. Langton, I'm going to ride on those streets you mentioned, and that way I can have exact addresses, and I'm gonna put in a work order to get those, um, street stop signs fixed. Um, I'm also glad that I brought this up. I've also started riding around the district to see what street lights maybe are out that need to be replaced. I know there's about six on Marshall Richardson Road. Um, if you know somebody in your area or on the street, please let me know so that I can mark them as well and, um, find the app to get them hopefully replaced. Um, that's all I have. Um, thank you all for coming. Stay proud of yourselves.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. Ms. Leonard?
I wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight, this meeting, um, and the council meeting. Uh, before closing, I want to, uh, say thank you and great job to the mayor for the decision for the back-to-school badge, and also partners, partners rates for the successful execution of that badge. Started all kind of rough and wet, but we did it well. And so, uh, the kids really enjoyed themselves and got a lot of stuff to do, so I was getting some here. Uh, remember to keep the administration and your fellow board members praying.
Thanks, Counselor McKay. First, I'd like to start off by saying good evening. Thank you, thank you everyone for coming out. This has been a successful meeting. I'm thankful, and I'm grateful.
I thank the mayor for everything he has done. I'm gonna say good night.